Tabitha.
Mayor of the House.
Here.
Commissioner Heffron.
Here.
Commissioner Schreiber.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
Present.
And for our invocation tonight, we have Pastor Mark Somerville with Family Worship Side.
Shall we pray? Our gracious Father, we are thankful tonight that we can gather in your name this evening. Lord, we pray especially for our Catholic friends tonight as they mourn the loss of their pope. We pray your comfort and your strength will be upon them at this time. We thank you for the leadership of our city council here in El Dorado. We thank you for their involvement. We pray you'll give them wisdom and guidance and direction tonight in this meeting. We pray in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Would everybody please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we have a couple of proclamations tonight, so I'm going to start there. The first proclamation is for the National Day of Prayer. Whereas the National Day of Prayer is a tradition first proclaimed by the Continental Congress in seventeen seventy-five, and whereas the United States Congress by a joint resolution on April seventeenth nineteen fifty-two provided that the president shall set aside and proclaim a suitable day each year other than a Sunday as the National Day of Prayer, on which people of the United States may turn to God in prayer and meditation. And whereas in nineteen eighty-eight legislation setting aside the first Thursday of May in each year as the National Day of Prayer was passed unanimously by both houses of the United States Congress and signed by President Ronald Reagan. And whereas the National Day of Prayer is an opportunity for all Americans to join in united prayer to acknowledge our dependence on God, give thanks for blessings received, request healing for wounds endured, and ask God to guide our leaders and bring wholeness to the United States and its citizens. And whereas it is fitting and proper to give thanks to God by observing a National Day of Prayer in the city of El Dorado, Kansas, when all may acknowledge our blessings and express gratitude for them while recognizing our dependence on God for our continued blessings and guidance. Now therefore, I Bill Young, Mayor of the city of El Dorado, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May first, two thousand twenty-five as the National Day of Prayer in the city of El Dorado and encourage all citizens to observe this day in ways appropriate to its importance and significance in recognizing this year's theme. Pour out to God of hope and be filled, from the Bible verse Romans fifteen thirteen, dated this twenty-first day of April, two thousand twenty-five. So, May first, Thursday, May first, is the National Day of Prayer. It's also the day of the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. And it's always been a day that I've looked forward to every year, as do a lot of people in our community. And I was contacted, I was talking last week with Gene Plummer, who's helping put that together this year again. And I will be unable to attend this year as I'll be driving back with my daughter from Fort Benning as she heads to a new base in Arizona. So this will be the first Mayor's Prayer Breakfast I've missed, I think, since becoming a commissioner way back when. So I've asked Commissioner Wilkinson to fill in for me that day, and Kendra, I appreciate you doing that. And I'm going to be putting together a note, if you don't mind, for you to read that morning for me. It's always been an important day to me, and I know it is to you as well. So I encourage everyone to take the time on that Thursday. And as the theme of this year's National Day of Prayer is, pour out to God, to the God of hope, and be filled. So it'll be a good opportunity. So we're looking forward to that. I appreciate it, Kendra. Our next proclamation tonight is also one that I'm excited to get to read. Whereas on the night of April eighteenth seventeen seventy-five, American patriot Paul Revere embarked on his legendary midnight ride to alert colonial militia of the approaching British forces, a courageous act that played a pivotal role in the opening chapter of the American Revolutionary War. And whereas Revere's brave journey through the Massachusetts countryside has become a symbol of American liberty, resolve, and the enduring spirit of resistance in the face of tyranny. And whereas this year marks the two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary of that historic ride, a moment that continues to inspire generations with its message of vigilance, unity, and the power of ordinary citizens to change the course of history. And whereas communities across the United States are coming together to remember and reflect on the ideals of freedom and patriotism that Paul Revere so boldly represented. And whereas the city of El Dorado, Kansas proudly honors our shared American heritage and celebrates the heroes who laid the foundation for the liberties we cherish today. Now therefore, I Bill Young, Mayor of the city of El Dorado, do hereby proclaim April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five as Paul Revere Day and encourage all citizens to remember the courage and commitment of those who fought for our independence, to reflect on the enduring values of freedom and civic duty, and to celebrate the rich history that unites us as Americans. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of El Dorado to be affixed this twenty-first day of April, two thousand twenty-five. And we have Teresa here from the Daughters of the American Revolution to receive this. I'll bring it down there, too. This is a copy of the proclamation. I appreciate you being here, and we're looking forward to hearing from you.
Okay. I'm Teresa Bachman, Regent for the Susanna French Putney Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. Paul Revere's ride is the starting point for over eighteen months of celebrations and commemorations across America, leading up to the signing of the Declaration of Independence two-hundred-and-fifty years ago on July fourth seventeen seventy-six. And I had to look this up, it's called the semi-quinsentennial. That's a word, yeah. Communities are planning grand parties and solemn tributes to the founders of this great nation and the God who protected them. I thank Mayor Young for this proclamation, alerting El Dorado and Butler County citizens about this monumental time in our history. With that, I will close with these few words from the poem by Henry Wadsworth Longfellow. Listen, my children, and you shall hear of the ride, the midnight ride of Paul Revere. On the eighteenth of April in seventy-five, hardly a man is now alive who remembers that famous day and year. He said to his friend, "If the British march by land or sea from the town to night, hang a lantern aloft in the belfry arch of the north church tower as a signal light, one if by land and two if by sea, and I on the opposite shore will be ready to ride and spread the alarm through every middlesex village and farm, for the country folk to be up and to arm." Thank you.
For those of us old enough, we had to memorize that.
Yes. Too bad they don't have that now.
Thank you, Teresa. Getting to read these proclamations and be a part of this for things like the National Day of Prayer and the Paul Revere Day are, as I told Teresa before the meeting, some of the best parts of this job. That's the parts of the job that I truly, truly get to appreciate. So thank you for being here. Next on the agenda, we have personal appearances. Personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the City Commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of the meeting by calling City Clerk Emerald Ashlock at three-one-six, three-two-one, nine-one-zero-zero by five o'clock PM the Tuesday preceding the meeting. Presentations are limited to ten minutes, and any presentation is for information purposes only, and no action will be taken. And tonight, for personal appearance, we have Ashley Jack representing the excess sales tax committee recommendations. Come on up.
Good evening, it's great to see each of you again. I am representing the excess sales tax committee, but I would like to recognize that I was just one of several members in this discussion. Also serving on this committee were Wade Wilkinson, Edward Wilson, Will Wilfredo, Blanco Diaz, Lori Geos, Steve Fellers, and Heather Rinconval. And so we had a couple of meetings to discuss through the different proposals that were presented to us. We had right at about nine-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to look at. In our discussions, we wanted to focus in on, did this project enhance the quality of life, the safety of our community? Was it efficient and cost-effective for what was being proposed? And did it serve our citizens? And so, and also, a key piece was also thinking about the creation of new revenue for the community. So as we considered these projects, there was lots of discussion around each of those. I may not go in the same order as they're presented on the screen, but I wanted to talk a little bit about each one of these. Am I limited to ten minutes?
You take your time.
Okay.
We've got all night out.
Okay. So I do want to first start out talking about the BMX facility. This was one that everyone felt very passionate about. If you listen to the community and the needs that are there, there's lots of conversation about how are we serving our youth. And so there was a lot of discussion around this, and we honestly felt like fifty thousand maybe was limiting to what they needed. Because we do understand that there's a desire to assign this as a park that the city will maintain. It is going to require some fencing, it's going to require some purchase of land after some discussion happens with the railroad, and if it stays there, if it goes somewhere else. We really felt like some signage was important in maintenance. And so what you'll find is, is that, yes, we do approve the fifty thousand, but you also will see that on youth facilities, we have three hundred thousand. And we really want to see that that three hundred thousand is not only used to enhance this particular area, but we also want it to be utilized for park and rec activities. I know that there are some discussion within the media in regards, and I know you've been having some work sessions on, you know, how do we utilize maybe some existing spaces within the city to where we can offer some additional park and rec activities, not taking away from the existing facilities that are there. And so not only would we like for you to consider the three hundred thousand, taking some of that to add towards the BMX facility, but we'd also for you to take that remaining amount and to utilize it to develop a center or enhance a center that already exists. Not developing a new park or creating a new park, we really feel like that those exist, but really leaning into what is the community asking for and how can we serve our youth. I will tell you that everybody felt very passionate about the BMX facility. It's great to see the student, or the students, that's the teacher in me coming out, the children in the community and adults utilizing that facility, but also to see the activity coming from that park down to the bike facility that, or the bike station that has been developed by somebody in the community. So we really like that. We all voted with no discussion in regards to the bike path bridge repairs. We think that that's very important and serves our community. The housing programs and the small business assistance were both well-supported by this committee, as well as the property maintenance assistance. The police radio replacement, that was the first thing that was voted on. There was no discussion around that, everybody felt that that was very important. And the media production room was well-supported, and everybody enjoys the videos that are produced and the transparency that is coming from the city through all of that, so those were supported. Now what you're going to note is that I have not discussed the kiosk in the downtown and the holiday decoration replacement. First of all, for the kiosk downtown, one of the things that I wanted to note was several of the committee members that were on this committee served last year, and we had voted for the downtown speaker system. And I believe that we allotted ninety thousand dollars for that. I know that there has been some different things that you have encountered trying to get that radio system based upon, or the speaker system, based upon the discussion with who had the proprietary rights to that. And so you're doing some searching. So we're hoping with that ninety thousand that you can continue to move forward with that. But we want to also support that speaker system with two kiosks instead of one kiosk. There were several committee members that talked about the fact that, yes, we were aware of where the original placement was for a kiosk, but we felt like that another kiosk could be set up somewhere maybe towards courthouse or the YMCA or somewhere where we can draw some individuals to come down to the downtown area. So we would like to support two kiosks, so thirty thousand for that, and it was asked for fifteen thousand. So that's why you'll see a thirty thousand there. In regards to the holiday decorations, it was our understanding that this will be a four-year commitment or until all items are replaced because they are very pricey. And really, everybody looks forward to seeing the holiday decorations come out. It really gets everybody into the spirit. So we do have support there. The reason I hadn't talked about this yet, because there was a lot of discussion about a Christmas tree and where a city Christmas tree could be. And so I will tell you, not funded by sales tax, there was discussion by some committee members and a city commissioner there that we will see a Christmas tree this year. It will maybe not be at the location originally discussed, but there will be a community Christmas tree that will come this year. And I think I've already heard some prices being discussed of how much it was going to cost to get that Christmas tree.
And there was something about I had to match the funds of the person who said he'd go half.
Yes, so.
You can kind of guess who it was.
So the challenge is on, and I think we all are going to get to enjoy a community Christmas tree this year, but not maybe at the location that had originally been discussed because it would be wiped out by a semi right away, so, especially with a good ice storm. So we're going to, I think we are leaning towards, I think I heard, kind of towards the Gordy Park area where a lot of the work is happening there, which takes me to the next piece, which is, we would like to take a hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars that we were provided to help support the Gordy Park Pavilion area. That was not a proposal that was brought in front of us, but it was based upon some just discussion and things that we are aware of, and we were told as a committee, we could listen to what's happening in the community, what were the needs, and that we could bring forward some proposals. So we had right at, with all the projects, the holiday decorations and the additional kiosk, there was four-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, so that was utilizing four-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand of the dollars. So you'll see that we have allotted three hundred thousand for the youth facilities with the hopes that additional money from that three hundred thousand will go towards the BMX facility based upon what is determined once everything is set up in regards to where that's going to be located. Because lighting is going to be very critical, because if you watch, there are kids there at various hours, and as it starts to get dark, we want to make sure that the safety is there and with the different events that will be occurring. And then the hundred-and-eighty-five thousand for the Gordy Park. And maybe within that Gordy Park money, if you want to utilize some of those funds, I know that the committee members were very open for you entertaining that to complete that downtown speaker system, because we really feel like having the speaker system expand, as we talked about in our proposal last year, that that would be critical for those speakers to be around in that area with all the events occurring. So with that being said, I think I've covered everything. Any questions?
Appreciate your effort.
I have a higher question. Could you maybe give an example of the difference between a housing program and property maintenance assistance?
Okay, I don't have the exact descriptions in front of me, so Tabitha's going to be better at describing the difference between those.
Awesome.
So the purpose of the property maintenance assistance program is to assist people who are perhaps getting some of our larger code enforcement issues, and so that could help with some of that.
Okay.
And then the housing program is to make a kind of a down payment on what the housing committee is discussing, and so it gives you guys a little bit of money to work with as you finish up your conversations.
That makes perfect sense.
Jeff, I remember the structure kind of of the property maintenance piece was kind of an application to do like a matching, some matching funds to.
And, yes, I'm sorry, and I did forget that part. We, it would also include matching funds, so if like a block of properties wanted to try to do some improvements to make a larger difference, if you could get your neighbors on board with it, you could make, we could make a bigger difference in various areas of town as well.
Also, it should be noted that those are concepts and full programs that for either the housing program or the property maintenance assistance program. So the details will be worked out as those funds are finalized and appropriated.
Well, I appreciate the work that you all did on this, and I know it was a lot of discussion. I've heard feedback from committee members, and it was fun discussion, it sounded like it at times. And I'm sure as you got to talking about the Christmas tree at Central Main, it was even more interesting. But I'm excited to know, I'm excited to know that we're going to have a community Christmas tree.
Yes.
Thank you for the work that you guys did.
Okay, see you in about a week or so.
Yeah.
All right.
Just take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin even had crisis calls, wow, on the Christmas tree.
I can't get him. So that's all for personal appearances. Next, we have public comments. Persons who wish to address the City Commission regarding any matter that is under the jurisdiction the City Commission may do, so when called upon. Comments on personnel matters, matters pending in court, and land use matters are not permitted. Land use public hearings are held during the Planning Commission meetings. Do we have anyone here who'd like to make a public comment tonight? Come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Andrew Tipton. I wanted to come up and take a moment to introduce myself, because I have filed for this year's City Commission election. I'm a lifelong El Dorado resident, this community means a lot to me, and I'm looking forward to working with each of you to see how we can further El Dorado's growth and development. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Andrew.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. On tonight's consent agenda, we're considering the approval of City Commission work session minutes from April second, two thousand twenty-five, and City Commission meeting minutes from April seventh, two thousand twenty-five. The approval of the appropriation ordinance number zero-three-dash-two-five in the amount of six million, three-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand, ninety-one dollars, thirty-three cents, and the consideration of the approval of an extension on the community development block grant project at District one forty-two. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I shall move.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. There's nothing for old business, so we're going to move on to new business. Agenda item number twelve, consideration of an ordinance zoning certain land on the city of El Dorado, Kansas, extraterritorial jurisdiction, I-1 Light Industrial District, and amending the zoning map of the city.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, this property is located just to the south of town, south of our city limits, on Highway fifty-four, US seventy-seven. The applicant is requesting the rezone from AR, agricultural residential, to light industrial. Historically, the site has functioned as an industrial property for many years, from oil service to junkyard prior and those type of heavy uses. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on March twenty-seventh and voted in recommendation of rezoning the property. This also has been reviewed by the Board of County Commission and with their approval on February fourth.
Ready for a motion? I am.
I move to approve the rezoning request for one-two-five-seven, Southwest Highway seventy-seven, from AR Agricultural Residential District to I-1 Light Industrial District. Where's I-1? I-1, as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any further discussion?
Question, Scott.
Yes.
I noticed in the minutes that it was asked about testing the soil. Why was that necessary?
That was a question of the Planning Commissioner. That's up to the property owner, his whatever, you know, what's a proper word? I mean, something the city wouldn't get involved in or the county wouldn't.
There's not required remediation?
Yeah. There was a, there was some prior property issues that we are aware of that have gone through remediation because of some effects to the city's property that are adjacent to it. That was a number of years ago, and that has been closed out.
Okay, I was just curious.
Any other questions? Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Agenda item number thirteen, consideration of approval of the Nancy Grange subdivision flat.
Yes, so this plat is a piece of property located along Garcia Court, so that is a roadway just to the west of the old Pioneer Ballin facility and north of BG and Barton Solvents, out of our industrial park. Mr. Grange has planted this property, the three lots. As if you may recall, this previously was owned by the city of El Dorado, and it was in our land bank, and then there was a spec building built on it. The owner of that since has sold the property to Mr. Grange. He's gone out and planted it to market the property for industrial prospects. And there'll be nice lots that are all currently served by utilities today. And the Planning Commission recommended approval of the final plat, and it is consistent with our comprehensive plan and meets all of our current zoning regulations.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the final plat of the Nancy Grange subdivision as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion or questions? I just have a couple, one clarifying question. So the spec building is on the other side of Garcia Court, is that right? It doesn't sit on one of these pieces?
Yeah, the spec building is on one of these lots.
It's on the front lot?
Yep.
Okay, so they're each like four acre lots. Perfect, okay, that's great. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Agenda item number fourteen, consideration of a special use permit for an accessory apartment at two-oh-two Southwest Morley Road.
So two-oh-two Southwest Morley Road is located just to the west of our city limits out at the Y of two-fifty-four and one-ninety-six. The applicants are proposing building an accessory apartment on their property with the intent right now to house family, but it could be anyone in the future. To be able to have an accessory apartment on a property, they are required to go through a special use permit process. They're proposing to construct a forty-foot-by-forty-foot detached building on the property. The Planning Commission held a public hearing and reviewed this special use permit request at their March twenty-seventh meeting and recommended approval.
Thank you, Scott. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the special use permit for an accessory apartment at two-oh-two Southwest Morley Road as recommended by the Planning Commissioners.
Second. Motion is second. Is there any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Agenda item number fifteen, consideration of an ordinance zoning certain land in the city of El Dorado, Kansas, O-one Office Institutional District and amending zoning map of the city, amending the zoning map of the city.
Yes, so Colleen Mesmet is acting as the agent for some like children's advocacy center in this case. The property is located on the KP Farms addition, so that is north of Tuanda, west of Boyer Road. It's property that used to be a part of the El Dorado Business Park. In the not-so-recent past, it was rezoned residential, that didn't develop. Some like children's advocacy center found the property, was interested, it fits their needs. So that brings us to the rezone request, the office institutional, which fits within the framework of what they're wanting to provide on that property. Office institutional is, Stafford's probably a little better fit for the area with industrial to the north. We have office institutional in the rest of the business office park where Flahell's Veterinary Clinic is, the Holiday Inn, Days Inn. Those are all office institutional uses. The Planning Commission on this item as well, on March twenty-seventh, held a public hearing and recommended approval of the rezoning.
Ready for a motion? I am.
I move to approve an ordinance zoning certain land in the city of El Dorado, Kansas, O-I Office Institutional District and amending the zoning map of the city.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions or discussion?
Does this mean that they will, they're moving from their headquarters right now on Twelfth Street?
I think they're wanting to combine a lot of their locations. A lot of their presence in Butler County, trying to get it all centered in one location, is what they've shared with us.
Now, is any of this complex? I'm going to assume it's more than just one offices.
They, they have a long-range plan, and it's in many phases. So a lot of those phases are of course relying on grants and fundraising.
Now, is there a possibility that down the way with these plans, there's going to be some housing of juveniles?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So this could be, this could grow in size?
There, it's pretty large property. If I can pull up the map, I just love, oh, thank you.
If that were to happen, would it need to be rezoned?
No. That it is these three yellow lots right there.
Okay, so they have a lot of room for expansion.
There's lots. It's, I think it's over 10 acres.
Okay. Thank you.
That, that's all of the, what was KB Farms that Kevin was, that's like 13, it's like 13 acres or something, that's what it was when we did have a grant for. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Agenda item number 16, consideration of an ordinance zoning certain land in the city of El Dorado, Kansas, R2 Residential Medium Density District and amending the map of the city.
Yes, so this is in our ETJ as well. Brought the map up, I apologize, I didn't pull these up earlier as we're going through these, all these zoning cases. This property is located just directly west of the El Dorado Airport, south of 30th, and east of Turkey Creek Road. It is a 20-acre parcel. The property owner has a desire to build a house on it, currently zoned AR, which requires 40 acres to have a home on it. So that is the reason for the request to RS, Residential Suburban, to allow them to construct a home on this 20-acre parcel. The planning commission for this case as well, and recommended approval for the rezone to RS, as well as going to the county commission.
Okay, so the, it's RS or R2?
RS.
Yeah, I think we're on two different things. I think he's talking about the one on 6th Street.
Yeah, we're on number 16. We're at agenda number 16.
Okay, so it wasn't just me. I thought I was having, helping matching up. Okay.
So remember that.
Okay, we'll remember that one.
There we go.
There we go.
I apologize.
Ah, okay.
This is to R2, so these properties are located on West 6th Avenue, just north of the intersection of Summit Street and 6th Avenue. We're zoning those from C1. There was a property owner that bought that, that was interested in building a commercial type use. We have a real mixed use of zoning along that corridor, from light industrial, the west, a single-family, to the south, to Mobile Home Park, which is shaded in green, and commercial uses on east, in red, of the Mobile Home Park as well. A lot of these are zoned industrial, but serve more of a commercial type use. He was not able to make that project move forward, found another site, so there is a person interested in constructing duplexes on this. It was previously zoned R3, which is multifamily, so R2 fits the prior zoning, and planning commission recommended approval of this, at their March 27th meeting.
Now it makes sense to me.
Sorry.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the ordinance zoning certain land in the city of El Dorado, Kansas, R2 Residential Medium Density District and amending the map of the city.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Agenda item number 17, consideration of an ordinance zoning certain land in the city of El Dorado, Kansas, Extraterritorial Jurisdiction RS, Residential Suburban District and amending the zoning map of the city.
Yes, so as I previously mentioned on prior agenda items, this is a 20-acre parcel with a desire to build a home, so that is the reason for the rezoning from AR, which requires 40 acres, to residential suburban.
Okay. Do I have a motion on this?
I move to approve the ordinance zoning certain land in the city of El Dorado, Kansas, Extraterritorial Jurisdiction RS, Residential Suburban District and amending the zoning map of the city.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any questions or discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Scott, and thank you to the planning commission for all the work they did on these agendas. It was a lot. We don't have anything under discussion items, so we're going to move on to city commission advisory board updates, and we will start with Commissioner Wilkinson.
Main Street meets us coming Thursday.
Okay. Commissioner Leach.
Parks and Recs met last Wednesday, had a good meeting, a lot of discussion on various things. They have a lot of things going on with all the soccer and all the stuff that's going on, numbers are up, so I think they're feeling pretty good. One of the things we talked about was a possible situation of a naming recognition for an individual, and they're looking into that. Kind of interesting, they have a policy that says that a person has to be, cannot be allowed to have something named after them on the sports building, which was evidently new.
Okay.
So we'll probably be seeing some of that, to talk about it, see if we want to stick with that or maybe move different.
Okay.
But good meeting, a lot of good discussion.
Perfect, thank you. Commissioner Scribner.
K254 met, they've put out bids, you probably know that there's going to be some work done at Greenwich Web Rock, kind of in that area, to enhance the road there. If I understand correctly, they've put it out to bid, they have a couple contractors that they're working with, but they're going to go back and do some redesigning, I think, maybe make some changes to what they initially thought, so that's still going to happen. There was a lot of discussion about the economic impact that that corridor has and the importance of it, and how to utilize that and enhance that to the, to the region.
Thank you.
And housing has not met.
Perfect, thank you.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report, all right. EFABC is coming up, this Wednesday or next?
This Wednesday.
This Wednesday.
This, 14th.
I said that, hey.
Yeah, beautiful.
Yeah, that's what I said, in an upcoming Wednesday.
That's what you said.
Okay. So yeah, that's coming up, I'll have that. Just to kind of let, update you guys, as I have asked Commissioner Scribner to sit in my role, or my seat on the El Dorado Inc. board meetings, I have just have, have had some scheduling conflicts being able to make both of those and then the executive board meeting, so we have commissioner representation at the board level with Commissioner Tetrick and Scribner, Commissioners Tetrick and Scribner, and then I am still sitting in on the executive board meetings, so. So it's good, good coverage, we'll be, we'll have opportunities to bring back more information, but you got to go to the first one, I think, last month, so keep it up. And then the other, other thing that I wanted to bring up is that as summer's getting close, baseball season's getting ready to start, it's going to, the Walnuts players will start showing up at the end of May. I had a conversation last week with Sheldon and Dave, and we're short some host family beds, if you know anyone that is interested in being a host parent, get on the Walnuts or KCLB Facebook page. We host a couple of players every year at our house, we have for a long time, it's a lot of fun to stay involved with, with the Walnuts. So if you know of anyone that has some interest in that, direct them to the El Dorado Walnuts Facebook page or the KCLB Facebook page, and have them get in touch with the people out there. It's pretty easy, you just got to have a, you know, roof for them, washer and dryer, so they can do their laundry, so it's a, it's a pretty easy gig, and a good opportunity to get to know some kids from, from outside of our community that get to spend their summers here, so. Reach out if you get the opportunity, that's all I have, and we have the city commissioner, or city manager's update.
I'll just do things, I know that everyone's looking forward to the end of Central Avenue project, we're getting closer, they had to finish some water service connections, and then we'll be getting ready for pavement, so I'm told that within the next couple of weeks, they'll be out paving, and that should be a couple of weeks after that, we'll be, we'll be good to go. Yeah, I just got an update this afternoon, it looks like Thursday afternoon they'll start milling Central.
Oh, that looks good.
So they will mill the outside lanes, and then pave that, and then work on the middle, mill, mill out, so we're getting close. All the underground work is done, so now it's just the pavement.
Good.
Good deal.
So the bumps, I keep getting asked, are the bumps going to remain? No, that was temporary, they'll be milled overlaying.
We're not going to have permanent speed bumps on Central?
Nope.
Put a Christmas tree out there.
It slows traffic down, so we put a Christmas tree out.
Exactly.
It does, indeed.
Very good, Leon, you're thinking ahead.
It can also allow them to get air bubbles.
Just the top half of the tree.
That's right. What's that bush doing, it needs to, so, yeah, that's how they. We are still waiting on a, a couple of other options from Gravity Works for the Gordy Park Pavilion, but once we have those put together, we'll come back before you all to get your final blessing, before we get some public comment on the layouts and designs for the Gordy Park concept. You will soon hopefully see Parks and Rec Department out at the Business Park, implementing our spring maintenance program, we do know it's overgrown, the rain however may have delayed that a little bit, but we'll be seeing some action out there soon. They're going to be doing it phases to allow parks for, to also maintain other areas, but you should start to see some, some progress on that. And then let's see, the Aquatic Center conversation will be starting here soon, we've completed a lot of the due diligence, the consultant is finalizing the reports, they'll be getting that to us very soon, and then once that's completed, we'll be able to get in front of you all and also get in front of the community for public engagement on, on that, so I think those are the big things I have for you all today.
Thank you.
Question.
Yes.
Anthony Scott might be able to answer this. I was reading the planning commission meeting minutes, and you talked about finding abandoned structures when you were doing Central and Main.
Trying to jog my memory. We do have a very inquisitive, very good planning commission, very engaged, so they like to ask about what's going on in the community as well.
We were doing CLP, and you talked about the things we kept running into along Central, like the box.
We didn't find any caverns, we didn't find any tunnels.
That was going to be my next question.
There was no tunnels. We did run into an energy headline that was buried in conduits, a concrete conduit, that went underneath Central, that was kind of, no one knew was really there, so that was in our way for a little bit. Of course, David's reported on, we found the old limestone bridge abutments for, little bridge over, when the Walnut River split the water treatment plant, we found that, that caused a headache for a little while. But other than that, like, knock on wood, it's gone really incredibly smooth, as painful as it's been, and as long as it's been, contractors have done a really good job, and taking care of our community, and, and there could have been a number of things that we encountered that could have caused serious problems, and we were able to either rework it real quick or figure some solutions out, but, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? I said at the beginning of the meeting, I was, you know, we got some really good information from the sales tax, excess sales tax committee this year, and, and I think they, at least my understanding, having, having talked to people that are, that are serving on that group, they really put a lot of thought and effort and conversation into bringing that forward, so I'm looking forward to seeing the, the final, final piece come to us for discussion and approval, so that's it, that's what I've got.
And look out for the deer on 6th Street early in the morning. I got nailed last Tuesday.
They like to charge cards, so.
They do.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, everyone.
Could I release the mayor and maybe all of you for a little bit?